Mr. Hollins.
President.
Mr. Van Hassel. You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Would you all join me in pledging our nation's flag? Over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Approval of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to read the August 22 regular meeting minutes and the September 20 regular minutes? If so, are there any corrections or omissions?
Uh-uh. Excuse me.
If not, motion to accept the minutes as printed?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as printed.
Seconded.
No, motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes for the August 22 and September 20 regular meeting minutes. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission. In advance, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or reschedule the matter for consideration and discussion at a later time. Does anybody want to address the commission? Okay. Go on to item number three, old business, recycling and beautification subcommittees. Discussion and possible action regarding the formation of a recycling and/or beautification subcommittee.
So, this was something that I had you put back on the agenda and I've been thinking about it and I think that at this time, it's not really necessary to make a subcommittee. That's all I have to say. At a later time, if it comes up, then I'll speak to you and then maybe we can put it on, back on the agenda.
Okay. Because my thing on that was, recycling subcommittee, I don't really know what we would do on something like that, other than try and, oh, this says low battery on this, in fact, my battery just about shot. And the beautification commission or committee, that's something I'd like, maybe we could work on in the future and get something going and might even be able to get the Historic Preservation Commission to work together because that would sort of be a hand-in-hand kind of thing, I would think, communication and historic preservation. See if we can get some bodies. So, make a motion to table this until...
I make a motion we table this recycling and beautification subcommittee till a further point in time.
I'll second it.
The motion's been made and seconded to table it till an undisclosed or undetermined later date. Any more discussion on the subject? Not? All is in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Promoting community involvement. Discussion and possible action in regards to promoting community involvement in the area, cleanups in recycling, including each commissioner's research findings. And I think this kind of goes along with what a recycling subcommittee would be doing is trying to promote the involvement in recycling and that's something that I just don't know how to do.
So, I had a few things that I looked up and I thought we could consider. As far as specifically, it's nothing really specifically recycling or specifically beautification, but just really promoting community involvement with the, really, the Clean City Commission and all of the things that we're doing. How can we get the community more involved and, you know, participating more? And so, I was looking at, I keep coming back to our affiliation with the Keep Arizona Beautiful and I think it would be really neat and I will try at our next meeting to bring more, if we could kind of keep this discussion going maybe, if it's okay with you guys, to bring more specific information from the Keep Arizona Beautiful site because they offer so many resources that I think we could take advantage of, just educational material. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but they do, it says they do have grant opportunities and that may have changed because I know when we met with the woman from Keep Arizona Beautiful, it seemed like some of the grants had gone away, but that could be something that we could look into. I'm also really interested in the cigarette littering prevention program that Keep Arizona Beautiful participates and that might be a little bit more of our conversation. I mean, every single day at the shop, I'm sweeping up cigarette butts and I just don't think people know that it's litter in our community. So, I think that would be one thing and I'll definitely do more research and bring back some specific things and maybe some action items we can do with that. Another thing I really would love to look in is adopting, adopt a park. And I was looking at the Tucson Clean and Beautiful and they have a whole step thing and I'll email this to you, but about how to go about adopting parks. And they only allow groups to adopt the parks, not just individuals. So, perhaps we could start a little thing where we have a list of parks that can be adopted. I think that maybe we could say something in the language or in the wording when we promote this, that if you adopt this park, you commit to coming, you know, every couple of months to clean up or maybe we could do several groups that come, you know, so that we have someone once a month coming and cleaning up or doing something like that. We could also do the trails with Crata, kind of get together with them and see if we could adopt, adopt a trail, adopt a park, just get a little more community.
See, I have a comment. We can't even get people to show up to clean up the highway and you want to adopt a park?
I think that, oh, sorry, you go ahead.
No, no. And that falls under the beautification thing again. We get a committee going with this beautification, we can get volunteers perhaps through the beautification committee to clean up a park, just like we do on our, on the divine cleanup or day of caring cleanup kind of thing. Promote it and get volunteers to help out on something like that.
And there's groups that their goal in being in this group is to volunteer. We've got Seraptimus Venture Club and then the Boy Scouts have to do their, you know, they have their Eagle Scouts projects and we have, you know, I think if we, we could go to the Boys and Girls Club or the, it's the Club for Youth now, but you go to these groups, that's kind of their, that's what they, that's kind of their purpose for being a group. And then also, a lot of these things were adopted years ago and then no one follows up and it's kind of fizzled out, you know? I think if we keep it and maybe even make post, "How's your park looking?" or whatever. But that's just an idea and I think that, you know, if people have a little more ownership in their city, then they might want to take a little better care of it. And then the last thing was a page, I know we have a community outreach person in the city now and this was just a suggestion, I thought this was really cool. This was Los Angeles on their page. They had, oh shoot, now did I lose it? Just a second. There it is.
Who is our outreach person?
Pardon me?
Who is our outreach person?
The city has a new Public Affairs Coordinator.
A new what?
Public Affairs Coordinator and she's kind of handles media releases and that kind of thing.
So, this would be on the page, and I'll send you this link as well and you guys, I'll send it to you, but if you look, it's, it's, this is on Los Angeles and then it has little paint-out graffiti, so we would have a link and you click on that and it tells people, "This is what you do if you find graffiti in the community." Plant a tree and then you click on that and it would talk about Arbor Day and if you want to get involved, these are the people and maybe dig a community card and whatever, some links to that. Paint a mural. If you want to reach out, maybe Main Street has been working with the city on that mural project. This is just an example, you know? Host a cleanup. Volunteer groups can sign up here to host a cleanup or we talk about our Day of Caring, you know? Find out more information, participate here. Plant a garden, community gardens, you know? Adopt a park, whatever, adopt a highway, adopt, click here. This is where, so it's really just a page where you can find all this information. That was just the ideas I had, all in one place, you know?
I like this paint-out graffiti because we've already got the adopt, the adopt-a-block kind of thing.
Yeah. And so, you click on that and then you just tell people information about it and if they like to sign up, here's the information. All in one place, kind of easy and it says, start, the title is, "Start a Beautification Project in Your Community." So, it actually gives people an opportunity as volunteer groups, do you want to start this or this is what's already going on, here's how you sign up, kind of thing.
Could I add that site?
Yeah, I'll email you guys all these links so you can take a look at it.
Just press home. I don't see.
Well, Sarah or Mr., could you email it to me?
Yes. Oh, absolutely. That'd be great. You're right.
Sorry.
Open meeting law. We just learned about that.
Yeah, you know, and in fact, this whole item number three kind of all ties in together. We talked about, can I skip forward to the C on this a little bit, the reusable bag distribution and we talked about having, rather than using the grocery stores, having an information booth at the first Friday, kind of thing, maybe three times a year, something like that. I think that would be a great place to distribute information, talk to people, see if we can, see if we can make a difference, educating them a little bit to try and get them involved in their city, to help clean the thing up and keep it looking attractive to entice people to come here.
Does it cost us to have a booth at the first Friday?
We talked about that.
I think that...
I didn't hear you, Sarah.
I was just saying, since the city sponsors the street closure, I think that it's kind of a partnership, so we might be able to work out something with the city booths at the event, you know, and possibly if we're there kind of helping clean up after and it shows Clean City Commission and we're, you know?
The mascot brought a...
Could I ask you to talk into your mic?
Oh, sorry. And we talked about if like the mascots there, a lot of with the first Friday, if you have a kids' activity, it's not, I don't think you would necessarily have to pay and even if the committee for first Friday decided you had to pay, it's only $25. So, I don't know.
And that $25 goes to?
To pay for insurance and stuff for the event.
Oh.
Because the city sponsors street closures, but they do not sponsor any of our event insurance or anything like that, so that all goes to that.
Being we are already a city entity, I wonder if our insurance would cover us?
Yeah, it covers for the whole, I mean, if someone's walking down the street with any benders, it covers in case they flip.
Much better.
So, that's why I know they charge for booth space.
Excuse my, this, this thing just went dead completely. I mean, it blacked out, so we'll get rid of it. Now we got this one. Okay, now I don't have to rely on paper.
So, I feel like the first Friday, it really would be better to talk about it that specifically at the next meeting because we have our last first Friday in this November and we're going to sit down with the city manager and some of the city afterwards to really kind of talk about whatever's going on and plans for the future, so it's kind of...
So, you're thinking about next year?
That's what I was thinking.
March is the, going to be, is it March or April? Or February is the next, the first one for next year.
And that would give us time, I think, to get together what we think we need in the booths. Who's going to need it? Who is that? That's the other one, getting, getting the schedule for, what is, how many hours does that run from?
Usually six to 10.
Six to 10. So, we're looking at four hours, you know, that's not a big...
February because of the light and dark, whether it might be five to like nine.
Okay. But that, I think that's, I would like to give that a try and see if we could get more response from the public that way than we do at the grocery stores because the grocery stores...
Well, Mr. Chairman, can we, I know these are related items, but we seem to kind of moved all the way on to the next item with the reusable bags. Can we get some direction, if we're maintaining this item on public participation, just keep that as a running agenda item and as you all find information, we can send that to us and we'll put it in the packet. But I guess I'd just like to wrap this one up.
Wrap that up, okay. Point of order here.
I understand everything.
My turn. I did some searching on the internet and found a listing. I just Googled city beautification programs and stuff like that and I came upon an interesting, this is one of a whole bunch of sections, but out of the community toolbox and it has establishing the neighborhood beautification programs and it goes through it step by step.
Okay.
The main thing, like I said last time, was getting the community involved. So, we need to be able to reach out to, maybe not to the individual evidences, but to the leaders of the community, the organizations in the community, you know, churches, Elks, whatever is out there and get them involved and then they can get their peoples involved. And it pretty much goes through the whole thing, why you should do it and all that stuff, you know, and the benefits of having a beautification program and all that stuff. So, that's, it's a good resource to look at and I'm sure there's more out there and then I tried to find some programs for individual cities and they're pretty much following what this is saying, so...
Well, see, aren't we off the subject?
Pardon me?
Aren't we off the agenda?
Well, I thought we sort of came back to our promoting community involvement situation.
So, we're back to three A.
So, Rob can kind of close that out. We could make a decision or...
Three B.
Again, I think this is something where it's going to have to be discontinued because there isn't anything we can really nail down right at this point. I mean, what, how do we do this? Just for instance, I would drop some things off as the recycle drop bins today and in the green glass container, there was a wheelbarrow. Now, you know, how do we get people to put what is supposed to be in the container? I mean, it's printed on the container. What else do they need to let them know that that is not a place to put trash? In the, in the container for plastic bags, there was palm fawns. Somebody had cut their palm tree and dumped the fawns in with the plastic bags. Again, it's printed very distinctly on the, on the container. Do we, do we go to the newspaper and put a big thing in the newspaper about, you know, try to plead to them to please use the right container for whatever it is that they're distributing or getting rid of or what? To me, we live in a civilization right now of people that don't care. Rules don't apply to them.
But the only way you're going to stop it is someone is there every hour, minute.
You can't, can't do that.
I think that, that there's always going to be that, that little bit of, that there's always going to be that group of people that are just going to put their trash in there. But I think that we just have to continue the education, just always have to. I think it's a good idea to periodically put in the newspaper some of the rules about recycling, you know? Did you know? Or when you go to the bins, these are the things that we accept and just continue, we just have to continue doing that. There's always going to be people that, hey, I don't want to pay for my trash, so I'm going to put it in this bin. Now, if there's less people putting it in the bin, that's less contamination that the city has to sort through.
Yeah, exactly, and that and it's less, less time sorting it. If it's partially already sorted for you, it cuts down on the expense and that's the thing we have to look at is the bottom line on this whole recycling thing.
It's the same problem with the beautification and stuff like that. It's a continual process of re-emphasizing the problem and the solution to it through multimedia sources and not just one because not everybody's on Facebook, not everybody reads paper, not everybody goes to the recycling place, stuff like that. With our system here, with the recycling, it's a little bit harder, but I know in some cities who have herb side recycling and stuff, they'll actually go around and periodically see what's in the recycling and give you a citation and fine you for throwing the wrong stuff into the recycling bin.
But then you have to have somebody guarding it every minute.
Every day or cameras, one or the other, and either way, it's expensive.
See, may I make a comment?
Yes.
The minutes from Tuesday night's city council meeting showed what, you can't have trash beyond your, your fence. They were saying about commercial vehicles, graffiti, the weeds and everything. All the rules and regulations were there.
Okay, the question being is...
How do we get that to the people then?
How do we contact the people?
Half of them don't watch the, I would say more than half, I would say 80% of the people don't watch that on TV.
Well, I know that's true too, but it's in the minutes of the city council.
So, should we take that and post that on our, on our, I mean, that's, that's good information. What can we do with that to share it to, I mean?
Well, you could put, put that piece in, the minutes. Well, the minutes, the discussions.
Yeah.
And the rules and regulations of what they were going to discuss. I personally could not be at that meeting, but I did see it on the agenda or workshop, whatever you want to call it.
I know we could share that on our Facebook page to try and get it out to people.
One problem I see is how, how can we get the leaders in the community to come to this meeting and sit out here and listen to us and also share their ideas and their solutions for their problems with us, instead of us telling them what they need to do. So, we need to have a campaign to get the leaders to come here and then obviously then they can, we need something on, in the media to promote what we're trying to do and I haven't, of course, I don't read a lot of newspapers and stuff like that, but I am not aware of anything like that being put out to the public before they can attend that and know that somebody is looking at making their community look better and be more inviting to live here.
Yeah, and that's the bottom line. A clean city is a city that's going to attract people.
Plus, it's going to be, your property values are going to be higher, the people's going to be happier because they don't have to look at trash and, well, as much trash, there's always going to be a problem, but it can be reduced if you, if we work at it. But it's, it's a continual effort. It's not, we do it one time and then we're done and then let's go on to something else. It's something we've got to keep. There's lots of different communities within the city and we may not be able to do them all at once, but if we can concentrate on an area and start out with a small project that's easily completed so that they can say, hey, we did this and you get some momentum going with something little before you progress into a larger project within that community and then, because when, when people are, when we're talking about it, the first thing you're going to do is a bunch of people will look and listen, but then they aren't seeing anything and not doing anything. So, then you bring back and you have something for them to see, then you do something bigger, then they're going to look and say, hey, they're actually doing something. I want to help now and they'll become involved, but if you don't get that going, they're never going to do anything.
This is true.
So, you gotta, you gotta show that somebody's interested in their city and give them something to be a part of. Right now, I don't know of any, anything like that. I don't know of what any of the other organizations are doing, but maybe, like I say, if we can get them to come here and see and talk to us with their ideas and let them figure out their own problems, that, I mean, I know there's lots of things going on that takes their time and stuff like that, but I think this is, you know, that's the thing with the taxes and all that stuff, but this stuff can be accomplished with very little, if any, money expended of tax money and stuff like that. People can do things on their own, with their own assets and stuff. We just need to give them a way to do that and show them the benefits of, of it.
See, but comment. Rob, you have a note on the minutes or whatever.
Yes, ma'am.
Huh?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, are the things that were in the city council agenda from Tuesday on these pages?
I don't believe so, not yet. I think that's something we could look in. There should be, there should be the PowerPoint presentation that was given to the council that should be available for us to put on the Facebook page, but I'd have to check on that.
So, I don't know if you answered your, my question. No, it's not on, on the websites, right?
The recordings of the council meeting is on the website. I don't know that the presentation was put on the Facebook page separately or not.
Thank you.
Okay. If you're spot on the city website that we can promote that and have people have a place that they can go and look and find information on beautifying their city and what they can do and stuff like that, so they have a place to go. And then I think it would be a good idea to get something in the newspaper, on, on the radio stations. I know not everybody listens to radio stations, everybody reads a newspaper, a bunch of people use the computer for whatever, probably more so than any of the other things in my experience. So, but we got to do something to get them to do something.
Well, I think, can we, can we go ahead and, being we're coming up on the holiday season, kind of put this on hold and figure... season, kind of put this on, on hold and, and figure out maybe something between now and then that we could put in the newspaper, maybe examples from other, other places to show what has been done in other spots that we could be doing here?
We could put in a short, you know, we got the website, we can put in links with, with information that they could click on if they're interested in doing a beautification program for their area. They could go to the website, click on the, the link to, say, the community toolbox or whatever, and it has a whole bunch of different areas of the same type of thing, code enforcement on up, you know?
We can beat this to death here.
This would be a good time from now till then to talk about it and organize what we're going to do to start a campaign at a certain time in the future. You know, if you wanna do it in the spring for spring cleaning and then, you know, go on from there or whatever. This is a good planning time, I think.
Can we, so that kind of goes back to that link that I'd like to share with you. I think it's very organized and it does show, and you looked at it a little bit, where you can click on and it can show each, I think that, just giving, having that information all in one place might be a great thing. And so maybe you can share your community toolbox with Rob, and we can read it and do our homework before we come back next time and have a more productive conversation on this.
Excuse me, where are we on the agenda?
We're on basically three, item B. Trying to promote community involvement.
I thought we were past that.
Well, I, I kind of brought in the reusable bag thing is because it, it kind of fell into that same, we had discussed the First Friday previously.
So could I, then, at this point, should we just make a motion to kind of continue the conversation at a late date?
Sure. I think that's a good idea.
Can I make a motion to table this until next month's agenda so we could still do more research?
On which subject?
That's three, is it three B?
Three B.
Community involvement, I believe. I second that.
This is tabled.
Motion's been made and seconded to table promoting community involvement until our November meeting.
I got one other thing to add on that. In the meantime, can we maybe get the, the media here, the, our city director that's new here?
Invite, invite the newspaper, sure.
Yeah. So we can get some input from them also.
You know, and maybe, maybe get our liaison, I believe it's, it's David White. Yeah, that's supposed to be our liaison now, and maybe get him here so he has some idea of what we're trying to do that he can bring it to the commission.
What is, what is the city getting since we don't have a, and haven't had a liaison meet person here since we've, since I started this? What information are they getting from us and, and how are they getting it and?
They can have minutes.
I'm trying to, it kind of upset me that we don't have the guy here that's got a job to do. He can't be busy all the time. I mean, that's ridiculous.
Maybe if he has a conflict schedule, it would be a different one.
We need to get somebody that can make it to the meeting.
I think we can talk with David and see if we can get him here. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Indicate by, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And we'll talk to David and see if he can't be here at least for part of the meeting.
I, I have to actually excuse myself. Is that appropriate to do that right now?
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, guys.
And we kind of, item, item C, old business, item C, reusable bag distribution. We, we touched on this earlier. What are your thoughts on, on, should we include the grocery stores as well? I mean, we've been giving away bags like crazy, and they're, they're not cheap.
Well, see, why don't we just try First Friday and see how it goes?
And see how it works?
And then hold off on the grocery stores. Um, yeah, you, we give them out, but when I go to the store, I don't see very many going in.
I think, I think just trying a, a new way, just to get it out there. You can kind of, they can sit and talk more, and you can give information as to why, what's going on at First Fridays as well.
If, if, if we're willing to do that and wait and, and, and start it, when First Friday starts again next year in March?
February.
February, okay. That would give time to figure out how we really wanna decorate this booth, to make it attractive, to attract people into it. We'll give away, we'll give away the plastic, the plastic bags, reusable bags, and, and maybe a few other little items to attract attention for the kids or something, but nothing, no, not like the fair where we were just giving away copious amounts of, of stuff. I don't know whether half of it even made it past the garbage can, to be honest with you. The printed literature I saw in the garbage cans before they even got out the door.
If it's like everything else, like your direct mail and all that kind of stuff, your percentage of people that look at it is going to be fairly small, and that's why you gotta keep doing it.
But if we could reach some of them, yeah.
I think, too, if we're there to talk to, I mean, I felt like I answered quite a few questions, far more questions at the fair than we've ever gotten at the grocery store or anything like that. Even if five people get information that they need, I feel that it would work better than at the grocery store.
When, when we had the booth on the street at the dedication ceremony, and I was amazed, we had a lot of people that stopped and talked. We had those that came over and got a goodie bag, but there was those that actually stopped and talked, and, and we discussed things with them. So I think it's a really, a better idea than, than just, just giving out hundreds of bags at the grocery stores and not giving adults out of it. Shall we make a motion on that to maybe look at March as, or February as, as the first Friday that we do this?
There was a motion made to do it.
Pardon me?
Didn't we already make a motion to do the February nineteenth?
Not on this one, ma'am, no.
We talked about it, but we didn't make a motion.
We could also look for other opportunities to be able to give out the bags at different things going on in, in the city and stuff like that, too, not just First Friday, but anytime that something, we're doing a community type thing would be a good place to go.
And, and we get, we get a lot of people from the county that stop by and, and talk and, and vent their, their problems. Maybe we could get a race to come in and, and answer questions for them, be, be there on hand for them.
Joint effort.
That would be a possibility.
Well, I make a motion that we put this on the agenda then for next month so that we're not falling behind.
Okay.
For First Friday, is that okay?
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made that we continue this over until next month? And any further comments?
On that, at that point, can we see what we have, like, and how many bags we have and stuff like that, so we know?
It's, it's already in your, okay.
Okay? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Uh, Paul, sorry. And Wayne seconded.
No.
Nope.
Oh.
Happy did I second that.
I'm sorry. Motion carried. Okay, moving on to item number four, old business, American Recycle Day, discussion and possible action regarding American Recycle Day.
Mr. Chairman, I, I handed out some information before the meeting. So I got some information from Nina Brackett, who's helped coordinate this with Rich and Eddie in the past. She has a few different scenarios, and, and this year, we were, I guess, between the transition from planning and zoning to us, we kind of missed the deadline a little bit on this one. So she has a couple of different scenarios. One would be to continue with the November contest, you know, with the award date, November fifteenth for the contest. We'd have to get the flyers out to the schools next Monday for that. And the, I guess, there's a potential conflict because October is a fire prevention outreach month, so I think a lot of the schools may be doing activities for fire prevention. An alternative date would be an award date of December thirteenth. We would email that out to the school, or we'd get the flyers to the schools November I think there's potential conflict there with the holidays. You know, they're, I think that's their last day of school is the thirteenth, and so I'm sure there'll be a lot of families traveling for the holidays. She had another scenario that would actually push it into February. You know, again, that might conflict with Valentine's Day. I think we could still do it, but instead of maybe of a kind of a variation on the December one, would be that we could go ahead and get those out to the schools, we could judge them in November, but maybe not do the awards until January. So there's quite a few different options there. I don't know if the commissioners had any questions, I could try to answer them.
I like the idea of the February one. Valentine's Day isn't that big of, of a, of a conflict, as far as I'm concerned. The others were way, were way too late for the November, I mean, here we are at the eighteenth of October already. I, I think November's really out of the question, and December, boy, that's a tough one.
It's ridiculous.
That's a tough one. So I, I like the idea of February. And then if we wanted later in the year, have, have just a poster contest or, or do it all again in, in November, or next year, with, with plenty of notice. With the transition this year between the, the two, the, the public works taking over, yeah, I, I can see where things just, just too much to do and slip through, so.
What do you need from us? A motion to accept the February two thousand nineteen fourth contest?
Yes, ma'am, that would, that would work, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
February twenty first or February thirteenth? It's the February twenty first award date.
Invite the students? Well, to have it in February, according to these dates, it's fine with me.
Okay.
Do I have to state all the dates?
No, ma'am, the February, it's the February twenty first award date.
Okay. Now, as far as, oh, sorry.
You made a motion to?
I made the motion that we have it in February.
Motion's been made, I'll hear a second.
Second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we continue this until February, have the contest on February twenty first. All in favor? Or is there any more discussion?
We're gonna award, do the awards on the twenty first, when are they gonna do the contest?
The awards would be on the twenty first, so the contest would be...
I'm like, why are they reading?
Whenever we get it out to the schools and give them, give them plenty of time to, to the essay and the, and the posters, all, all that. Okay? All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. I like that idea.
I do have one question.
Yes.
I would like to table the amount, the number of winners by the classroom. I think we have to discuss that further at a later date.
Now, the...
We've agreed on the date.
Yeah.
All right? We have not agreed on how much money?
Oh, how much money we're gonna give away as, as a, as a, an award? Yeah, we can, we can...
I would like to table that, tell...
Well, we can just put that on, on the agenda for...
Next month.
Yeah, okay. Item B, Commissioner appointments, discussion and possible action regarding consideration, recommendation to the city council concerning the appointment and reappointment of clean city commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You have, you have two commissioners whose terms expire in December. One is Commissioner Cummins, and she is eligible for reappointment. The other is Vice Chairman Wang, who's completing his first term. He's also eligible for reappointment. I don't know if he's interested in serving, I haven't reached out to him. We just, this doesn't need to be an action item tonight, we're just presenting the information. There is also one new talent bank application that's included in your packet. Like I say, this, this isn't an action item tonight, we probably will do it in November as an action item, but maybe we put this on as information in case commissioners knew of anyone else who might be interested in serving, and maybe to get a little feel for if these people eligible for reemployment, if they would be interested.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the application, he is a Mojave County resident. I thought we could only have two Mojave Counties.
I believe that, I believe that is true.
It's true.
Yes.
All right, so if Wang stays, does anybody know if Wang is gonna come?
Well, Wayne has missed, I think this is the third meeting, he is consecutive that he's missed now.
So are we...
I don't know if he's continuing, if he's, if he wants to continue with this, or whether he's really interested in it or not. Quite frankly, we need people that can be here.
I agree.
And I would just assume, look at applications to replace Richard. I mean, I like Richard, but he's gotta be...
I do, too.
He's gotta be here.
All right, so if Richard doesn't come on, then this guy could come on.
Yeah. So we have to contact, contact Richard and see what his plans are. Commissioner Jordan, would you be willing to?
I will say, I did not realize it was coming up this soon. I am starting a new job, so I can retable it till next meeting so I can find out what my duties would entail for my new job, if I can be as available as I have been.
So we have to table this. I make a motion we table this till next month.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded that we table this until next month, when perhaps we might have a full commission attendance. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
What, what, what are we doing here now?
We're, we're voting to, to table this.
Oh, okay, I'll agree with him.
Any opposed? Okay. Item five, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements available attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings. Commissioner Hollins?
The only thing I have, if I'd like to see something on recycling put back on the agenda, if we can have a more discussions on, on recycling and, I just like to talk about recycling.
I have nothing.
Alicia Bowman? The only thing that I have, the Clean City Commission was invited to the dig it, commens, ceremonies of...
it, uh, commens, ceremonies, uh, last month, and, um, I attended. And it was, it was really quite nice. Uh, if you haven't been down to the, to the garden lately, uh, you should see it. It's, it's really been fixed up quite nice. And, uh, they, uh, made a point of, of announcing that the Clean City Commission, uh, was helping out in their project with, with money. So, uh, it was, it was quite nice. Um, other than that, I have nothing.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
In favor of adjournment, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion...